Welcome everybody to the Tuesday, August 22, 2023, meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're glad to have you all here. I'd like to remind everybody to turn off your cellphones if you're in attendance with us. At this time, I'd like to welcome up Mary Martin with Northwest ISD Safety and Security Department. Mary was with our Denton County family for quite some time and is glad to have you back in the courthouse. And Mary is going to lead us in vacation, and our pledges will be led by Brad Sebastian, our Fire Marshal Field Police Staff.
Thank you, Judge. Shall we pray? Jehovah God, we humbly become before your throne as your servants. We ask that our hearts and our minds be open for your will in all things. God, we ask for forgiveness when we have sinned against you, and we ask for strength to forgive others. Today, may your wisdom guide the Commissioners Court as a work on behalf of the citizens of Denton County. Your word tells us to whom much is given, much is required, and the burden of the elected office is heavy. We ask that your grace, mercies, and hand of protection cover those serving in such capacities in our cities, county, state, and great nation. May they always call upon you for strength. God, please be with those serving and defending our country at home and abroad. Be with the sick, our widows and orphans. May their needs be filled, and your mercies abound in their lives. God, please be with our schools, the students, staff, and those who work in other capacities. May your hand of protection cover them as they move through this school year. Each day, O God, may we be intentional with the talents that you have blessed us with and bring honor and glory to you. May the citizens of Denton County be blessed by our actions here today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mary.
Please join me in our United States pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and to our great state. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Mary, thank you so much, and you're welcome back anytime. We're glad to have you. Thank you for praying. All right. Next, let's go to item one. Cheryl, are there any one registered for public input? There is no one registered for item one. So we'll go ahead and proceed with item two. Our consent agenda members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda, or do we have a motion for approval as presented? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, approval of order-making appointments. Item two D is approval of interdepartmental transfers. Item two C is approval of budget amendment request 101960 for the juvenile probation department to transfer $26,000 from counseling to administrative equipment to cover the cost of recording equipment for music therapy. Item two D is approval of the budget amendment request 101970 for the magistrate court to transfer $5,690 from various lines to visiting judge expense to allocate funding for the remainder of the fiscal year. Item two E is approval of budget amendment request 101990 for Public Health Clinical Division to transfer $4,000 from professional liability insurance to medical supplies to cover the cost of additional clinical medical supplies and any appropriate action. Item five A is approval of the bill report payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT Interest, and DA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item five B is approval of a resolution to participate in the Texas Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Systems Trust. This is also known as Texas Class for the Denton County District Clerk. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item six A is approval to declare miscellaneous vehicles and vehicle parts as surplus advertising place in online auction 23-277 for any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six B, approval award of ITB dash two three dash two seven six two. This is fire loan, fire sprinkler, kitchen hood system, and radio tower building inspections and testing to allied fire protection.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six C, approval to revise an evaluation committee member appointment representing technology services from RAP 22-2690, enterprise resource planning, software and implementation services from Sarves Haskell, application support manager to Booty Yuli Onto, application development manager. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven A, approval of budget amendment request 101940 for the Department of Transportation Engineering to increase revenues and increase revenues for municipal road reimbursement and allocate expenditures for road material for $70,199 to allocate the reimbursement for the City of Oak Point interlocal cooperation agreement and to transfer $8,750 from unappropriate contingency to various line items provide funding the remainder of the fiscal year.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven B, approval of budget amendment request 101980 for the Public Health Clinical Division to transfer $32,300 from vaccines to various line items to cover the cost of technology equipment and to fund anticipated expenses and shortages for remainder of the fiscal year. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven C is approval of budget amendment request 101950 for the county jail to transfer $452,634 from salary assistance to overtime cash option outside of the budget amendment in human resources overtime policy as recommended by the Budget Office, and $1,066 for administrative supplies to various lines for a total transfer of $454,500 to cover the cost of overtime pay, two scanners, ammunition, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven D, approval of budget amendment request 102000 for emergency management to transfer $8,152 from nondepartmental unappropriate contingency to various line items to cover the cost of hosting an active threat summit. The chair move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Back years ago, we had discussed, I'm seeing a lot of items coming out of unappropriate contingency, and we had discussed using your budget, transferring funds in your budget before you go to unappropriate contingency. So I want to make sure that people are aware that before they start taking money out of unappropriate contingency and you have money in your budget, you need to use that money up.
Interdepartmental transfer.
Uh huh, before you come to unappropriate contingency.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for those comments. Item eight A is a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have two promotions in the county clerk, five new hires in the sheriff's office, one rehire in the sheriff's office, three promotions in the tax office, and one promotion in the Texas Act extension. And the five new hires are detention officer ones.
And that is great news. And I know the sheriff saw, that's, I think it was four last week or the week before, and then five. So this is, this is, this is great. This is great, so.
Five, five.
Yeah, one.
Five.
One's a rehire. Yeah.
So that's six.
I think it's great to get a.
Very good news. Thank you. All right, that is for recording purposes only. Next is item eight B, approval of accepting the updated investment lineup presented by Nationwide Retirement Services.
Judge, Commissioners, this item is once again here before you, Nationwide send this information to us, letting us know that they have new funds available to employees, and they are recommending that we accept the new proposal, and they have the financial gurus with them, so I'm asking you to accept their recommendation.
All right, is there any questions? Chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item nine A, is approval of the Health and Human Services Commission Family Planning Grant. This is amendment number five, contract for fiscal year 2023, September 1st, 2023, through August 31st, 2024, in the amount of $182,489 in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 10A, approval of the request for a public hearing at 9:00 a.m. on September the 26th, 2023, for the James B. King Edition. This is a replatton lot, lot two, block A. This is 4.920 acres located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 10B, approval of the preliminary road acceptance of Legacy Ranch Phase Two located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 10C, approval of the final road acceptance of the Legacy Ranch Phase One subdivision and the county maintenance system located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 11A, approval request to hold a public hearing at 9:00 a.m. on September the 12th, 2023 to one, discuss approval of the Denton County Clerk's records archive plan, two, approval of the continued collection of the $10 preservation and restoration fee by the county clerk, and three, advertise notice of the public hearing in the local newspaper and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 12A, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement for the 2023-2024 between Denton County, Texas and Wise County, Texas for the emergency housing and care of inmates and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 13A, approval of the United Way of Denton County Incorporated funding request to fill allocation of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-19 and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're going to pull item 14A, per legal, we're going to pull 14A. Let's proceed to 14B, approval of addendum one to an agreement for point-of-sale motor vehicle registration renewal between Denton County, Texas and Randall's Food and Drugs Incorporated, DBA Tom Thumb for seven, Denton County locations as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 17. We'll, community updates, we'll start with Commissioner Precinct One.
None for me, sir. Thank you.
All right, no report. We'll proceed to Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. Short list today. So Carrollton has their boards and commissions meet and greet tomorrow at 5:30 at City Hall, and I think that is it.
All right, sounds good. Commissioner Mitchell.
Lakeside Music Series in Lakeside and Flower Mound, August 25th, 7:30 to 9:30. Denim and Pearls 30th Anniversary Gala for Special Abilities on August 26th. That's going to be in Flower Mound at the Courtyard. August 29th, the Wonder of Compost When Trash Becomes Treasure. That's going to be in Flower Mound. Lake Dallas has their trade days, and Louisville have Layla Night Blue Supermoon Hike, August 31st. I won't be attending. It's outside.
Outside.
I don't blame you. Okay, Commissioner Edmondson. Oh.
There you go.
There we go.
Thank you. Okay, first of all, the fair is going on in full swing. I spoke with someone today who has been out there, and he said it's not as bad as you think it is. They actually have fans going and.
The heat. Yes, the heat.
That's right. That's what he meant. Sorry. That did come out all bad. The fair is very good. The heat is a little bit of a problem.
Let's just clarify that.
They have a lot of fans, and they covered buildings, and he said that there's like 1,500 square feet of shade out there. I'm not quite sure where, but at any rate, it's a great fair, and if any of you all haven't been yet, try to make plans to go out there. Here in Denton, on the 25th, at MLK Center, we are going to have an adapted social connections thing. It's a hangout time and movie watching for ages 14 plus, designed for those with disabilities. Then, there's a 70s party, which is for ages 50 plus, at the American Legion Hall in their senior center. They are asking that active adults dress in 70s outfits and dress and dance the night away. Just, that sound like fun. Then the North Texas Overdose Awareness Day is August 31st. We heard a little bit about this last week, but let's all be very aware of this ongoing problem throughout our country. I think the Commissioner has already talked about the Flower Mound Farmers Market and the Lakeside Movies Series. We also have in Roanoke a Farmers Market, and in South Lake, we've got Movies in the Park on the 26th. This is a free movie for the family and food for purchase. Everybody's out having a good time in spite of it being too hot, but please be careful when you go out. It is warm.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, I would, under 18, say there will be no Commissioners Court on October the 3rd due to a TAC conference. So there'll be no court on October 3rd, so I'll make note of that. Let's proceed to.
End on September 5th, right?
End September 5th. Yeah, it's posted on the agenda.
Yes, yes.
I was just calling out the new one.
Got it.
So this is the executive session. Let's go to item 15A to Texas Government Code 5510711A, consultation with attorney in a closed meeting when a governmental body seeks the advice of its attorney about pending litigation, a cause number 422CV00436 styled NH, bound through Nadine Depp and Nadine Depp versus Natalie Castilla, Matthew Merrick, and Denton County, which is currently pending in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas, Sherman Division. And 15B, Texas Government Code 5510711A, consultation with attorney in a closed meeting with a governmental body seeks the advice of its attorney about contemplated litigation regarding the EEOC claim filed by Fred D. Barrell Jr. And 15C, Texas Government Code 5510745A1, personnel matters affecting the county advisory body closed meeting to liberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline dismissal of a member or advisor barred to with the Little Amteurs Number Three Board. And it is 9:20, and we are executive session. of a member or advisor barred to with the Little Amteurs, uh, number three board. And it is nine-twenty and we are executive session.